Let's go to roll call.
Ms. Romero?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
He is present, I'm sure he'll be joining us momentarily.
Mr. Durham?
Here.
Mrs. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres?
Here.
Mr. Kucic?
Mayor Rothschild?
Here. Item two.
Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
The invocation will be given by Rabbi Bat Shiva Appel from Temple Emmanuel. After the invocation, I ask that you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Creator and Sustainer of life, we thank you for the many blessings of this day. Source of wisdom, we ask for good counsel for our leaders to help them in faithfully performing all their labors on our behalf. Help us, eternal one, to gather in peace and strengthen us, O guardian, to accomplish our tasks today. Spread over us your wisdom and guide us. May this be your will.
Thank you. Thank you, Rabbi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with never ceasing justice for all.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 413 dated December 18 is received into and made part of the record. I have a motion to approve the appointments in the report.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the appointment of Mark Rubin to the Tucson Supplemental Retirement System Board of Trustees and the reappointment of Martha McClements to the Armory Park Historic Zone Advisory Board. It's my understanding that both Mr. Rubin and Ms. McClements are present, is that correct? If you could stand and we could thank you for your service.
I haven't done anything yet.
That would come from my ex-partner. But the service you're about to do for us is, of course, without recompense and it really is important work for the city, so we thank you both for stepping up from all of the council. So, thank you for being here. Thank you. Thank you, Martha. Thank you. All right. Well, don't leave yet, you haven't been appointed. Is there any discussion on this item?
No.
If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So, thank you, both of you.
Thank you.
Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Mr. Eddie Rios as Ward Five representative to Independent Audit and Performers Commission.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, let's move on to item three.
Mayor and council and city managers' reports, summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 400 dated December 18 is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council and the city manager to report on current events. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Councilmember Romero.
As a matter of personal privilege, Mr. Mayor, I'm pretty sure everyone in this room and those watching at home heard about your decision to not seek a third term as mayor of the city of Tucson. And I just wanted to take this time to thank you for your eight years of dedicated public service to our beautiful city and the residents of Tucson. It's an honor for me to have served with you on the council, and I'm proud to say we have worked towards reaching our goals in job creation, in city roads, in public safety, in parks. Much more to do, of course, but I absolutely thank you for your eight years to the Tucson community, and I just want to say how steady and effective you have been in improving the quality of life of the residents of the city of Tucson, and I really commend you for your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member, and it's been a privilege to serve, and will be for another year, with all of you as well.
And then I also want to recognize, also, this kind of, I learned this as I was walking into the council chambers, that our wonderful council member Shirley Scott has also announced that she will not be seeking reelection as a council member serving the residents of Ward Four. I also want to say how appreciative I am of her service to the residents of the city of Tucson, and she will be serving for 24 years, I believe, a historic amount of time, and want to thank her for her amazing and valuable work that she's put in for our community. She really has put in a lot of, as she says, a lot of buildings into Ward Four, a lot of services that were not there before she got there. Served on the Board of Directors of the National League of Seeds. She was a member of the Governor's Advisory Task Force Improving Outcomes for Incarcerated Women and Children, has been putting a back-to-school bash, providing breakfast, school supplies free of charge to the entire community, not just residents of Ward Four. She, under her leadership, there was a huge expansion of Clemens Regional Recreation Center, which is a first-ever project that brought together resources and expertise from not only the city, but from Pima County and Pima Community College. She has years and years and a long list of accomplishments, and I really want to thank you for your service to the residents of Ward Four and the entire city, and it really has been wonderful getting to know you and work with you, and, you know, you being an advisor, a friend, mentor, ally, in so many different things, and also improving the quality of life of the residents of the city of Tucson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been my privilege and honor, but as the mayor said, we still have a year left, so the body is still warm.
Yeah.
So, we still have one more year to go, but each of these meetings that we will be present for for the next year will be the last one, each one. Thank you.
Well, on that, I just wanted to invite you two to come to my cafecito, the Ward One council office, and yours truly is organizing a community cafecito and resource fair. It will be Saturday, January 12, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Fred Archer Center located at 1665 South La Choya Boulevard. My office is organizing a utility resource fair where we invite Tucson Water and Environmental Services and Southwest Gas and Cox Communications and Tucson Electric Power and many other utility companies, as well as Suntran, to provide applications and help with applications to people that need additional help, low-income community residents that can apply for all of these low-income programs that are provided by these utility companies, including the city of Tucson. But we will also be enjoying from there and kicking off a bike rodeo, bike repair will be available for families. We will provide delicious burritos and coffee, so come and have some coffee and burritos and take advantage of the opportunity of having all utilities there and apply for their programs to save some money in 2019. And of course, we'll also provide an opportunity for the community to talk with their Ward One representative on whatever you'd like to discuss. I don't have the opportunity many times to meet with everyone in the community, so I would love to see many faces there, and we'll all have an opportunity to have a good discussion. So, again, that's Saturday, January 12, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Fred Archer Center located at 1665 South La Choya Boulevard. Call my office at 791-4040 with any questions. Thank you.
Councilman Cunningham?
I just wanted to talk to you really quick about the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission, it doesn't always really do rezonings. They only do, they only address issues when there's a change to a neighborhood or area plan that has to be amended, and sometimes plan amendments are a very simple process that makes sense for neighbors, and sometimes plan amendments are very complex and complicated and are not in the best interest of neighbors. And amending those plans goes to a body that we have called the Planning Commission. And the only reason I bring this up is because we each have two appointments to the Planning Commission. And about eight years ago, when I first became a council member, I appointed a man named Quentin Bryson to the Planning Commission. And Quentin is a stalwart in the community. He's lived on the east side since he graduated from the university in 1956. He actually used to play football for the Arizona Wildcats, and Quentin is, came to me and said he wanted me on the Planning Commission, and I said, "Well, gee whiz, sure, Mr. Bryson," you know, not realizing what an important job it was. And all of my council colleagues can tell you that you appoint people to commissions with the best intentions, people volunteer to participate in these commissions with the best intentions, and more often than not, people step down, pretty often, or they stop showing up and they have to be replaced, the commission fails to make quorum, it just happens. Quentin Bryson, I don't think missed a meeting in the eight years he was on the Planning Commission. After two years of service, he's served as chair on the Planning Commission, and I just thought, and his term has expired and he is stepping down, he stepped down from the Planning Commission, I think November was his last meeting, and I didn't have the opportunity to publicly thank him for his service. So, Quentin, wherever you are, take a bow and thank you for serving the city of Tucson. That brings me to, speaking of thanking for service, Mr. Mayor and, of course, Councilmember Scott, our community is lucky to have public servants like you, and for those of us carrying on, or for those of us who continue to call it a service, we hope to live by the shining light of your examples. So, thank you.
Councilman Durham? Yes? No?
Same thing, this is going to be a familiar refrain, probably. Mayor Rothschild, I want to thank you for your seven years of service, and Shirley Scott, your 23. You have put us in a very good place as a city. Thank you for your efforts. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott? Councilmember Fimbres?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Friday, December 14, I had a productive meeting with South Tucson Mayor Bob Tesso, interim city manager, Veronica Moreno, Mike Chiskowski, with the City of Tucson Economic Initiatives, and Benny Young with Pima County, who is overseeing the Opportunity Zones for Economic Development, to discuss the federal Opportunity Zones that are in Ward Five and the city of South Tucson. A good discussion was had on the Opportunity Zones, and I look forward to working, to market the zones in Ward Five and to bring more businesses to Ward Five. I want to thank the Downtown Tucson Partners for giving me the opportunity to participate in the 2018 Parade of Lights, which took place Saturday, December 15. Mayor Rothschild, council members Paul Cunningham, Steve Kucic, Paul Durham, and Rahina Romero also were in the parade. Mayor Rothschild, councilman, oh, I already said that, nevermind. I want to thank all the individuals and organizations that took part in the parade, as well as the great crowd of Tucsonans who came out to see the parade. Also on Saturday, December 15, I had the privilege of attending the Christmas holiday event at the Quincy Douglas Center. It was great to see people from the surrounding neighborhoods enjoying the event that was organized by Jerry Neely, the director of the Quincy Douglas Center, and the center staff. Jerry honored people and organizations that took, that worked with the Quincy Douglas Center to help those in the surrounding neighborhoods. A record total of 832 food boxes were distributed Saturday morning, December 15, from the Fireman's Hall for their Christmas food box effort. Councilmember Shirley Scott joined me to help with the distribution of the food boxes. Congratulations to Josh Campbell and the Tucson Firefighters Association, Maria Benedetto with PALF, and the other groups and organizations that took part. More than 1,500 food boxes were distributed by the firefighters over Thanksgiving and Christmas. As we are in the holiday season and cold weather, please take time to remember those who may be in need of help. The weather-dependent Operation Deep Freeze Shelter Program began November 15. The Salvation Army opened overflow shelter through March 15, when overnight temperatures are predicted to be 40 degrees or lower with rain, 35 degrees or lower without rain, or when the wind chill factor indicates a health hazard from exposure. For more information or to help, please call the Salvation Army at 792-1111. The St. Francis Shelter is in need of more blankets, please call the Shelter Director, Carl Zawotzki, at 406-5300 for more information, and you can call Sister Jose's Women's Shelter for also assistance. Their number is 909-3905. Thank you.
Councilman Kucic?
Yeah, just real quickly, I want to join the rest of my colleagues in thanking you and Shirley for the years of service that you put in and look forward to the upcoming year. I'm sure we'll do this again in November, but preemptively that, thank you for what you've done.
And, Mr. Mayor, I forgot to add my congratulations and thank you for your service, both of you, for your outstanding work in improving the quality of life for all citizens in our great city.
Thank you, Richard. All right. Let's move on then to, before we do that, Mr. Manager, do you have anything you want?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Let's move on to item four.
Boards, committees, and commissions, reports. Mayor and council, you honor, there are no reports on this evening's agenda.
Okay, let's then move to item five.
Liquor license applications, report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 402 dated December 18 is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
You honor, this evening's liquor license agenda, item B, there is one request for person-location transfer. Under item five C, there is two requests for special events. Under item five D, there are three requests for agent change, acquisition of control. Staff has indicated that all the applicants are in compliance with city requirements. An appropriate motion would be to forward items five B-1, C-1 through 2, and D-1 through 3 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Got a motion as second. Any further discussion on that item? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Let's go to item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, any member of the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Please make sure you've read the information on the back of the speaker's card before making your presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call the audience is scheduled to last for 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review a matter, ask a matter be placed on future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. So, there's, we have 11 cards, we have, we should be able to get through them. The majority of the cards relate to the LaRocca rezoning, I think there's six or so people here on that, so I'm going to take sort of the, what I'll call the miscellaneous first or the individual first, and then we'll do the LaRocca, and hopefully we can get through all the cards, we might not get to maybe one person. So, let's get started. Let's get started with Colette Altaffer.
Good evening. My name is Colette Altaffer, and I'm not a paid consultant. Remember these numbers, 600,002.7 million. LaRua's on Broadway is a successful, locally-owned restaurant. Its tax receipts have helped to fund Rionne Nuevo for years, but LaRua's is closing because the RTA has commanded it. Our city has decided that this viable business is only worth $600,000. Contrast that with the corner of Campbell and Grant, which is not part of the Rionne Nuevo tax district. In 2013, the city paid the owner developers $2.7 million for the parking lot on that corner. No buildings, just asphalt. $2.7 million. For five years, those developers retained use of that parking lot. They demolished the attached buildings earlier this year, and it was their choice to do so. I want to thank our city for making these decisions. In its infinite wisdom, it has provided the voters of Tucson with yet another reason to vote no when the RTA comes back for reauthorization. The RTA is and has always been a way to line the pockets of a privileged few while robbing ordinary citizens of their property values and livelihoods. 600,002.7 million. Remember those numbers. We, the voters of this community, will not forget.
Okay. Robert Rice?
First, let me thank the both of you who have announced you're not running for reelection, that it's nice to have you do it in a timely manner so people can make plans. I came here tonight to talk about Union on Sixth Street. They came in with the announced intention of building a multi-story housing development right there in the middle of the Sixth, or the Fourth Avenue Entertainment District. You're really not allowed to impede them in any way without taking a financial hit for the city, but you're giving them seven years, you're going to give them seven years of no taxes, and they can afford to pay their taxes. Number one, it's not a blighted area. G-Platte was supposed to be for blight. It's not a blighted area. Number two, the G-Platte is supposed to encourage development, but they have already announced their intentions of moving in with or without it. So, you're giving them seven years of free taxes, not just to the city of Tucson, but for Pima County, Tucson Unified School District, Pima Community College, the library, everybody, and who's going to pay the taxes? The rest of us, citizens, are supposed to pitch in and pay their share of taxes on our houses and the small businesses in the city. And, I mean, I've been to hundreds of study sessions, and you're practically frothing at the mouth with the concept of absolving everybody, all development of taxes for seven years, all of which is going to be put on the backs of the homeowners and the small businesses, and I cannot afford to pay, I'm already paying Scott Stitler's share of taxes, Don Born's share of taxes, the Johnny Gibson family's share of taxes, half a dozen more, and you're just going to keep going on and on and on. My taxes have doubled. I lost several nights' sleep this summer wondering where my, was going to come up with the $1,150 for my tax payment on October 1st. My taxes have doubled and they're going to be up, they're going to double again in the next five or 10 years, and where's this money going to come from? You've got to stop absolving people, rich people, of their taxes and passing it on to the rest of us. I'm going to try to make next year's election a referendum on whether rich people should pay their fair share of taxes or not, as well as several other issues. Thank you.
Okay. Ruth Beaker?
Can we move this up? Can I? Why?
Can you go, can you go with the tall one? Just bring the mic down, you'll be good.
No. I would like to be able to see the clock ticking, and it's...
How about if I give you a 30-second warning?
It used to sit up here.
You'd have to talk to Roger about that.
Okay, well, we need to take care of that.
Okay, Ruth.
Okay. This is beginning my three minutes. Ruth Beaker, speaking for the TRIG Committee for Planning and Development Services. Land use decisions have significant impact on city of Tucson residents. They should feel that their voices are heard. Currently, the city splits topics for public hearings between zoning examiner and planning commission. You receive their recommendations. The public assumes you perceive them as we do, as your eyes and ears. So, how effective are your surrogate sensors? For two years, the zoning examiner process was wandering in the desert without a neutral professional to conduct hearings. We are optimistic that that situation has improved. Contracting Peter Gavin as a consultant to orient the new zoning examiner is definitely a positive. Now, we urge you to support measures to improve the planning commission, and Paul, you do have their job right. It starts with you making appointments, so it will have the full 13 members, but then there needs to be significant independent efforts to provide those commissioners the knowledge needed to be effective decision-makers. What is their role? What are their options to consider in a specific case? What rules should they follow in conducting their meetings? And of exceptional importance, the community expects the attorney's office to provide accurate legal guidance to your appointees. On both venues, the recommendations to you should reflect that they have taken in account the information presented by the public, not just recommendations from the staff. In fact, should staff be making recommendations at all or just presenting a factual report? Staff has worked with the applicant in preparing the case. Isn't that recommendation, then, a conflict of interest? Something for you to think about. Well done, and public hearings have the potential to build trust in government. Poorly done, they erode that trust. Recently, TRIG members have seen both. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Karen Green?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Karen Green, and while I am the current president of the Dunbar Spring Neighborhood, I am representing myself and some of my neighbors' views tonight. Let's be a city that dreams instead of a city that reacts. A few weeks ago, there was a meeting discussing the urgent need for affordable senior housing. In an op-ed piece in the paper about this meeting, one developer is quoted, not exactly, as saying something like, "The military can construct an entire city in a month. We should be able to figure this out with the help of the city. Let's figure out how to put an affordable senior housing project in the southwest corner of Speedway and Stone." According to the Stone Avenue Corridor Plan, developments on Stone should be transit-oriented and multi-use. That corner has all kinds of bus routes passing by in every direction. You could lower your parking requirements as people could use transit as their main mode of getting around. You could also have affordable housing for families, put a daycare on the bottom floor, have the seniors interacting with the kids. You could put a health clinic on the bottom that could serve these residents and the greater community who could get there by bus or walk over from nearby neighborhoods. If you really want to dream big, everyone could go activate Deanza Park with Tai Chi classes and kids on the playground. There are options out there that make sense and would help our community. Yes, the city might not make as much money on the land that they own, but you would be serving Tucsonans and helping to lower costs in the long run. Many people in the Dunbar Spring Neighborhood would welcome just such a development. Right now, there's a proposal on the table from Dutch Brothers Coffee. This is an out-of-state chain looking to expand in Tucson. They are car-centric, meaning it's all about the drive-through. There's no inside place to hang out. You can walk or bike up, but while you're waiting for your drink, you will be inhaling car exhaust fumes and taking a chance on someone hitting you. The exit and entrances for this project go into a right-turn lane on Speedway or the bus pullout on Stone. While I've heard the company is speedy, and I would hope it wouldn't turn into a situation like the Starbucks at Broadway and Campbell, I do see that as a possibility. I can also see traffic backing up on Speedway, drivers getting annoyed, cutting through our neighborhood on Ninth Avenue and Perry, and driving fast to get where they want to go. I have heard that one of the Dutch Brothers' location in Tempe is so popular and frankly rowdy that on the weekends, they've had to hire private security. So, a popular coffee business that hires locally, fun place to work, donates to the community, that's fabulous. Let's think of a better location than Speedway and Stone. Dunbar Spring is a neighborhood that would rather there were fewer cars on the road, less asphalt, so we're not excited about the idea of encouraging idling cars, exhaust fumes, and increasing the heat island effect. It's not the highest, best use for that property. Let's figure out how to dream big. We have the brains and the will to come together as a community to make something great happen. I can't wait to talk to you more about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is there a possibility of making sure that Dunbar Spring and other neighbors know the direction that mayor and council gave the city attorney earlier today?
Yeah, I think that what we can do is just get out to the neighborhood association presidents in the surrounding area that direction, if we can get that done. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, we'll do that, including the specific direction from the council to work with the nearby neighborhoods, including... nearby neighborhoods, including Dunbar Springs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thanks.
Hanson Fotherby. I would like to start out by asking the public to please go to savegoldenpinlanes.com and sign the petition to save the Golden Pin Lanes Bowling Center from closure. This is something that anyone can do without even leaving home to help Tucson without spending a lot of time or dollars. This is something you can do to help Tucson keep a large business from closing and not lose the paying, tax-paying dollars. So please go to savegoldenpinlanes.com, sign the petition, and read the blog. We are now at the point where we need to find a buyer to purchase the Golden Pin Lanes from the county. If any of the public who support us have any ideas, connections, tips, or leads, we could sure use your input, so I ask any supporters to please visit Felicia Chu's Save Golden Pin Lanes Facebook page to leave your suggestions, any you may have, to keep Tucson's largest and also most historic bowling center still operating and serving the Tucson community. We are looking for a buyer anywhere in the country or around the world if need be. Therefore, again, please make any suggestions for a buyer to Felicia Chu's Save Golden Pin Lanes dot com Facebook page. Please visit the website and submit your input. Many observers state that it will be very difficult to find a buyer after the county overspent what it should have paid to purchase the Golden Pin Lanes and now insists on recovering all of its money. This is a good point, but as the situation has turned out, we are where we are. This is historical importance of the bowling center, the benefit and enjoyment it provides to a wide and diverse portion of the community as an entertainment, but also unofficial community center. The monetary gain it adds to the local economy, the tax revenues it provides to local government, and the renown that the bowling center has built up around the state make this place very worthwhile to save. Bowling is a sport that is still alive and doing well today, and it is of good value for working people to entertain their families and get in and out of the heat in the summertime while still getting good exercise. It is a sport that all kinds of people will play. In closing, I would like to remind the public and appeal for their support one more time to please go to our blog at savegoldenpinlanes.com, and please sign the petition to save Golden Pin Lanes Bowling Center from closure. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Hanson. All right, the remainder of the speakers wish to speak about La Roca rezoning, which is on, I think, item 15 this evening. I think we'll have time for all of you, are very close, but as you're listening to the other speakers, if you find that what you were going to say has been said, or if you have a point or two extra, just please feel free to let us know that, you know, it's been said, and so that we can continue to move on. So we will start with Lisa Olson.
Hello, my name is Lisa Olson. I live at 2415 North Creek Vista Drive. I wanted to read my letter that I wrote to Mr. Paul Cunningham after the previous meetings, just to make sure that my input was given. I wanted to take this opportunity to comment on KC 91810 La Roca Vista, East Tankverde Road, SR to SR1 Ward 2. I live in the southeast end of the proposed development at 2415 North Creek Vista Drive. Previously, I've communicated my concerns each time to the court regarding the development of this property. While I oppose the development as proposed, I would not oppose the development if some conditions were changed. Here's a list of changes I propose that would help me be in favor of the development. On the south end of the development, I propose two lots instead of three, one-story homes required for those that are adjacent to other one-story homes. Priority two, one last lot on the east and west side of the proposed development. Number three, any existing trees and vegetation in proposed development must be maintained by the Developers Homeowners Association. Any trees that die must be removed from the Development's Homeowners Association in a timely manner and replaced with suitable replacements. I also want to comment regarding the developer, Brian Underwood, of the Planning Center. The first proposal was given as 19 lots, but yet in 2006, the approved development was set for 12 lots. Meanwhile, I purchased my property in 2007 for $296,900. At the same time, my house, at the same model, sold in November of 2018, just down the street from me, it sold for $287,715. The difference is, I added to my square footage a few years back, which explains the increase of value in my home. This tells me that my house isn't worth what I paid for it in 2007. So why would the proposed development be able to be zoned at 12 lots in 2006 to 16 lots in 2018? This just doesn't make sense. I feel as if the developer proposed the 19 lots as a tactic. They knew the Lakes at Castle Rock neighbors would oppose the development, and they would have an opportunity to appear as if they reduced the number down significantly from 19 to 16 to get what they wanted, an increase from 12 lots to 16 lots. I would fully support the development as proposed in 2006 or with conditions that I listed previously in this letter.
Ma'am, if you can take a sentence or two more.
Okay. The developer cannot say the homes were increased in the value significantly since 2006. So I would like to make sure that you guys understand that.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Michael Cahero, C-A-J-E-R-O. Is that correct? Somebody said Harris, I think the name-
I did. You happen to be Michael Harris?
Yes, I am.
I was wondering.
Michael Harris, 9537 East Shadow Lake Court, Tucson, Arizona, 85749. I just have a couple of simple things to say of the observation of the whole proceeding, procedures for the zoning. It seems like we always got last-minute notifications, if any, and so that it was almost like a tactic. I agree with everything that Lisa said to the T, as far as the amount of houses, everything. We would have been, probably would have been happy if it wouldn't have went back and forth so much with all of these tactics. We asked for, we didn't think was a lot of unreasonable things, considering the impact that it was having on our homes there. The two stories are out of question. Those to totally destroy the views of everybody and their value of their homes on that side of the property. It doesn't affect me personally, because I'm up on the very north side of the property, the furthest one up there, but it's just a matter that I just don't feel like it was, it was done the right way that was really in our best interest. We were meeting to get our views on what we thought about the zoning. So we gave them our views, and it was almost like they were ignored. And like Lisa said, it just went from 19 to 16, and it was like it was a tactic to be able to do that. I mean, I would even be happy with 14 that were in there, but no two-story homes. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Debbie Yoder. My husband and I live at 2419 North Creek Vista Drive. On my handout, I have shown where our house is in reference to the proposed development. We're in the southwest corner of the proposed development also. I would like to first state that George and I support the rezoning if the proposal addresses the concerns that we have expressed since the beginning of this process. The current proposal does not address our concerns or even meet the conditions specified by city staff for the project. Staff reports stated lots 3 through 17 should, of the 19 lots, should be reduced by four to mitigate the high density caused by having all of those lots on one side of the property. Only three of those lots were removed in the plan that was submitted for October 12. First, we ask that three lots in the ball of the cul-de-sac, the south side, be reduced to two lots. The proposed confirmation of Lot 14 places a 60 to 66-foot house along, within 30 feet of our backyard. This will place an 18-foot structure along our backyard. Three pages of the handouts that I provided show pictures of what that looks like from our backyard and where 18 feet is. We also ask that there be meaningful buffers, and that could be accomplished by making a building envelope in the middle 70 feet of the 210-foot lot. Again, I have drawings of that in my handout for you. We also ask that the Condition 10 that was put in place by the zoning examiner be rescinded. The applicant and the neighbors had talked about a fence that had something so that could be visible, instead of having the 10-foot buffer incorporated into the property owner's back lots. So, and I guess that's it. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Richard Bergen. I live at 2455 North Creek Vista Drive in Tucson. I would like to be assured that, other than Mr. Cunningham, the rest of the council members are aware of the written request by the majority of the 12 property owners to the east. That is, that the proposed roadway be located on the east side rather than the proposed west side. If relocated, the impact would be less to the 12 easterly property owners rather than less to the westerly three property owners. Should you all be aware of this situation and choose not to implement this request, it would be extremely unfortunate that the majority was not recognized. Lastly, it puzzles me that the zoning examiner arbitrarily deleted the developer's proposed 10-foot ring-bell easement along the easterly property line, which all of us abutting property owners want. We respectfully request that this easement be replaced. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Edward Messing. I live at 2450 North Tierra Verde Place in Tucson. I am speaking tonight on behalf of my wife, Lucy Messing, and myself regarding the rezoning of four and a half acres from SR to R1 to accommodate the La Roca Vista development. Our RX1-zone property is in the existing neighborhood of Tankaverty Acres and borders over 300 feet of the proposed development. Of greatest importance to us is the transition from the higher-density lakes at Castle Rock to the east of La Roca Vista and the less-dense RX1 zoning to the west. After many discussions with the Planning Center and their client, we have received a preliminary draft proposal that addresses most of our concerns. They include: A single, large lot at the northwest corner of the development with a 10-foot buffer and a 30-foot setback from Tankaverty Acres. Open space and a meandering roadway along the west portion of La Roca Vista, adjacent to the RX1 properties. All new homes are limited to a single story, except two at the southwest corner of La Roca Vista, which are adjacent to existing two-story homes in the Castle Rock neighborhood. We would, however, request a reduction in the total number of lots from 16 to 15, which was recommended by city staff. This will add open space and much-needed water retention and harvesting opportunities. These contingencies are consistent with the city's developmental principle of mitigating the impact of new developments on existing neighborhoods and providing the necessary transition between higher-density and lower-density properties. We appreciate Mayor and Council giving careful thought to this proposal and making sure that this infill project is considerate of all who will be affected. Thank you.
I just missed one thing. You said 10-foot buffer, and you followed that by 30-foot something. I just didn't catch the word.
Oh, 30-foot setback.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I thanked it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Manager Ortega and staff. My name is John Dickinson. I live at 2470 North Tierra Verde Place in the City of Tucson. I'm speaking for myself and my wife Sally about Item 13 on tonight's agenda. By now, you know Item 13 is the La Roca Vista request to rezone approximately 4.58 acres. This property is adjacent to our property and shares its eastern, our property shares its eastern 300-foot boundary with the west boundary of the planned subdivision. We met with Ward 2 staff and council member to express our concerns about the planned rezoning. Specifically, the two planned lots adjacent to ours do not provide the necessary buffering as required by the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan and the flexible lot development zoning option policies to protect established residential neighborhoods. These require mitigating the transition to our subdivisions lower RX1 density. The size and placement of the original lots necessitates having one building footprint just six feet from our common property line. This is neither appropriate or acceptable. Our proposed solution is to merge the plan's adjacent lots 1 and 2 into a single lot, provide a 10-foot landscape buffer along the subdivision boundary, require a 30-foot minimum building setback for that single lot. The landscape buffer and setback are consistent with the minimum buffering proposed along the eastern boundary of the new subdivision, which is adjacent to the even higher-density Lakes at Castle Rock subdivision. Combining lots 1 and 2, as you've heard, also reduces the total number of lots to 15, as recommended by the city's Planning and Development Services report. On November 28th, we received an email from Brian Underwood of the Planning Center with a revised preliminary plan. With this revised plan, the Planning Center agreed to accommodate our requests. I've turned in handouts with this email and revised preliminary development plan. We're asking you to include these agreed-to conditions with your approval of the rezoning. If you approve those conditions, we withdraw our protest. Otherwise, please deny the rezoning until there is satisfactory resolution. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more speaker on this, and we're going to call, and then Mr. Rankin, I have a question for you on this, which I want to take up now before I forget, I guess. Sally Dickinson?
I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, and we can take it up on 15, but I know-
Which is when we should, based on it being on the agenda as-
Okay, I'll make a note, or remind me that I have a question.
I will do that.
Perfect. No, no, that was it. No, he was on the next one. All right, then that'll conclude our call to the audience. Let's move on to Item 7.
Consent agenda items A through G.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, the city's consent agenda item A is approval of minutes. There is one correction to the minutes on page 19- On page nineteen, paragraph one, the word "team" should not be capitalized. Item B is finance write-off of uncollectible accounts receivable. That item has been continued at the request of staff. Item C is grants. Grants an aid agreement with the Tahoma Autumn Nation for various projects. Item D is an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for the two thousand seventeen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program Award. Item E is the intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for the two thousand eighteen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program Award. Item F is Tucson Codamending Chapter Ten modifications to the annual compensation plan for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. This item will be considered separately. Item G is a grant application to the Federal Transit Administration for urbanized area formula funds and buses and bus facilities. The city manager has a correction to read into the record. The city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as discussed during the study session and as requested by council member Durham, there will be a modification to the description of the project names in three of the boxes on page two of the communication describing the FTA grant application to add the words "and/or electric." So, the CNG and/or electric fueling system northwest expansion, the replacement CNG and/or electric forty-foot buses, both under Formula fifty-three thirty-nine and Formula fifty-three oh-seven funds.
Okay, so what's the proper motion, Mr. Clerk?
So, the motion would be to approve the consent agenda items A through G with the exception of B, and the amendments is read into the record to items A and G.
And F is being considered separately.
And F is being continued.
Okay, so it's A, C, D, E, and G, I think. Can we have a motion on that?
So moved.
Motion second on those five mad items. Any discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, item F apparently has been pulled. Mr. Rankin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as discussed during the study session today, some adjustments to the schedule C2 relating to fire suppression, non-exempt, need to be read into the record. With respect to pay grade four oh one S, step zero, the hourly rate is fifteen dollars and seventy-four cents, and the associated annual rate then would be forty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-four and dollars and eighty-eight cents. And then under step one, in that same pay grade, the appropriate hourly rate is sixteen dollars and thirteen cents, and the associated equivalent annual amount is forty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-six cents.
Okay, can I get a motion on that? Can I get some discussion on that?
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like to have the step zero be listed at sixteen thirteen and step one be listed at sixteen fifty-three, and then everything else remain the same.
Step one at sixteen thirteen, got that. And then what was the other one you wanted?
Step zero at sixteen thirteen, step one be sixteen fifty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion of second. Any other discussion on that matter?
And the explanation for that is, there are several different explanations. The first one, one of the reasons that I want to do this is because, as we move on to adjusting our pay scale later this year, we'll have already started with this adjustment. The second one was, this was the original assumption by the labor group. And finally, probably most importantly, is that I'm very concerned that our starting pay will be lower than, I think, every other fire department in the area, and I don't really want to be in that situation where we're not being proactive and we run into having a shortage, just like we did with the other public safety group. So, I think this is the best prudent way to go about it, and that's why I'm making the motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Oh, you've got it.
There was, there was. So, I just want to make a comment. When we approved the two and a half percent across the board, it was my assumption, anyway, that we were going to give a two and a half percent across the board in all pay grades, irrespective of whether or not there was an incumbent in that pay grade. And as I understand, what we're being asked to approve prior to the motion, it is that because there were no incumbents in pay grade zero, that we weren't applying the pay increase to them. And that was not at all what I think, it wasn't at all what I understood the motion to be in. So, I'm going to support the motion because I believe it's consistent with what the intent of the vote was, when we voted unanimously to give the two and a half percent across the board pay increase.
So, if we were to accept the motion, the sixteen thirteen for step zero and the sixteen, I believe, fifty-seven for step one?
Sixteen fifty-three.
Sixteen fifty-three. How would that affect the annual budget, Mr. Ortega?
Mr. Mayor, I need to confirm that. What I would suggest to you, if the council would like to move forward with that motion, that you reiterate the motion that was made at the study session before, that the maximum amount cost will be three-point-five million, and then we'd be happy to go back and ensure that those dollars all, will basically force-fit them on that.
Okay.
Because, again, that's been the direction and the spirit and intent of this has been the three-point-five million total, and so we can tweak it. You're welcome to do that, as you've stated, but then I would like the opportunity to go back and look to make sure that we will be within that three-point-five million dollar.
I'm very happy, I would support the motion if that were the case, three-point-five million, and so I think that's doable. And if it's not, then I'm not going to support the motion, but, because that was clearly the case. But what I want to be very clear on tonight is that all the other employees' raise is going into effect, and this continuing dispute from fire is not going to affect the other employees' raises.
Mr. Mayor, two things. Number one, I don't think we have a dispute. I think the direction you provided was really clear, it was three-point-five million. How that is distributed, I think we can continue to tweak. But I also want to make sure that you're clear, the two percent that was allocated for employees was not for every employee, it was for eligible employees that had two years of service plus. So, those employees that have less than that on the date, I think we had set December twenty-third, would not be eligible for that based on the criteria that you had set as a part of that original motion. So, I just wanted to make sure you were clear that the intent is across the board, but it was for eligible employees. And if you recall, the intent was to do that to help with compression issues across the board, not just-
Mr. Ortega, I understand, that was my misstatement, for eligible employees. Councilmember Durham?
Mr. Ortega, do you have an estimate of the cost of this change in the current fiscal year and on an annual basis?
So, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Durham, we estimate the cost around three to four-hundred-thousand dollars. I will look at it in more detail for, that's the annual cost. Obviously, half of that would be the cost for this current fiscal year. So, we're looking somewhere between one-fifty and two-hundred thousand in this current fiscal year.
So, should we be waiting for your report back to the council on this, or because we risk doing something contradictory here?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Durham, I would not recommend waiting on this. I think that, you know, this is one aspect. What I would suggest to you, that an option might be to leave the, we'll start, we'll say, we'll call it the step zero and step one is read into the record by city attorney Rankin, and then I can come back to you as a part of the conversation we're going to have next budget year for the decompression, I'm sorry, excuse me, for the thirty-thousand-dollar minimum wage. It's what we're looking at for, you know, having more discussion around that. What that does is it gives you an opportunity to weigh in on that as a part of that. And so, all it would mean is it delays that piece of it, but all the others would go forward. So, I would not recommend waiting on that. If there's concern, obviously, we can delay it, but I didn't want to delay it for the employees at this point.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that. So, what are we voting on, as councilmember Cunningham has moved, is these changes, sixteen thirteen and sixteen fifty-three, unless you determine that it will bust the three-and-a-half million? But we already know that it will bust that, don't we?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Durham, that's my expectation. What I'm asking for is latitude to go back and look at the impact that it has, and then I would force-fit, if you will, back into the three-point-five-million-dollar budget, so we don't go over-
As I understand the motion, Paul, is if we were to accept Paul Cunningham's motion to move up those two step zeros and step ones, also stay within the direction of the three-point-five, the manager would go back and adjust these other steps to-
We don't want to do that.
Three-point-five, well-
That's not the intent of the motion. The intent of the motion is not to adjust any more steps. The intent of the motion is to adjust the two lower steps because that was what was talked about from the beginning. The bottom line is, is that if we're off by a hundred thousand, I'm under the impression that no employee is currently affected by that anyway, so it doesn't even matter this fiscal year. It amounts to adjusting our pay scale properly, so that when we do do another adjustment later, we're not having this discussion with fire again.
Okay, well, then the only, the only thing that would, I guess, make me more comfortable is in two weeks or whenever it is, to, we're voting on the entire compensation schedule for all the employees, correct? What would make me then comfortable is to vote on all the employees except fire and come back in two weeks and see what that looks like.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I may?
Sure.
I'm at the same space where councilmember Kusacik is, that we had made a motion under the assumption that throughout fire, we were going to, it's not two-point-five, it's two percent, that we gave a compensation raise to our employees across the board. So, the assumption, it was a complicated discussion, I must admit, but the assumption that I left with is that we were going to, across the board in fire, we're going to do the two percent and then, you know, take care of the compression issues. And so, these numbers, as presented by councilmember Cunningham, is that. The intent of the mayor and council was to say, hey, two percent across the board, and then, and then deal with the compression. That is what I left with, under the impression that night, and according to your numbers, it would affect it by, what did you say, a hundred and fifty thousand this, this current fiscal year, and then, what is it, four hundred thousand next fiscal year?
Between three and four hundred thousand next fiscal year, right.
I think it is doing right. If we move with the, with the, with the councilmember Cunningham's numbers, as he read them into the record, without moving the rest, because that really is taking care of compensation. So, that's where I'm at with this particular, I don't want us to sit another, what, until the new year for this. I'd really like for the mayor and council to move forward.
Okay, well, I mean, I think I under, I think I have a sense of what happened. I think that whatever the negotiation was, and I'm presuming this, is that because there weren't any people in that step, they negotiated those other numbers up, and then they came back with the two percent number and said, oh, wait a second, look what happened here, those numbers should be up. And it is somewhat a question of how much it busts the budget, because we were very clear on the three-point-five million, too. And if we go up a hundred and fifty, that's a hundred and fifty from somewhere else this year, which is not a big deal.
Mr. Mayor, I might interrupt you just for a quick second.
Sure.
I think we're going down a path here that we just need to make sure we're all on the same page. Number one, I think there's, this does impact people, otherwise it wouldn't be a cost. And so, there's about eighty people that'll be impacted by this. And so, that cost is the three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars annually. You know, so I just want you to be clear, there are some folks that are, that are impacted by this. And again, you know, the intent, and I think that during, you know, when we sat at the table and you all deliberated this, the intent was to make a bigger spread for, for decompression. And if we, you know, if you increase the bottom level, you know, clearly that, that doesn't help with that decompression. So, again, there is, there is an impact here. It's not like there's no impact, and I just, I think that maybe you had the impression, I apologize if I gave that to you, but, you know, this does have an impact.
Well, quite frankly, if you raise the numbers to councilmember Cunningham's numbers, I mean, I guess decompression is somewhat in the eye of the beholder, but I still see decompression at the bottom. There's still step differences, significant step differences. So, to that extent, I think I have a sense of what happened here. Oh, well, we'll take it out. Councilmember Durham?
If we, if we make this change, we would not get, Mr. Ortega, we would not get the eighty-nine, eighty-nine percent compression that I thought we approved?
No, we wouldn't.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Durham, I'd have to check that, because, again, if you think about, you know, if you, if you move the entire step system up or the entire salary schedule up, and you don't, and you don't leave it and expend it, it may not get the full eighty-nine percent. I can't tell you that with absolute confidence, I'd have to check that. Now, here's another option that you may want to consider, Mayor. Obviously, it, I don't like to do this at the table, we're trying to do this. You could delay this discussion and call a meeting within the next, you know, week or so, which is very difficult because of the holidays, but it gives you time to think about it, gives us time to run the numbers, so that at least you know the impact on it.
Your honor, I think-
I'm trying to provide you with as much opportunity to make the decisions possible.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Your honor, we've had this, we've had this discussion thirteen times. I remember having the discussion in the study session about the step zero part. I'm telling you, the intent was to be at sixteen thirteen and sixteen fifty-three. That's why I'm making the adjustment tonight, and that's, I stand by my motion, and I don't want to change any of the other things, and I don't want to have any more discussions about it. I call the question.
Mr. Mayor, there's been a call for the question.
Was there a call for the question? Question's been called.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just, just for clarification, under Roberts' rules, calling of the question does not stop debate, it is actually a motion, and so there has to be a second and a call to question.
Second.
Who made the motion? Again, motion of second to call the question. Any discussion on calling the question? Anyone else want to be heard? If not, all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Question's called. The motion is to accept item F, adjust schedule C2 in step zero to sixteen thirteen, and in step, and step one to sixteen fifty-three. And it, not that, and it's, it is not within, if it goes beyond the three-point-five, then the manager with this motion will report back to us how much money we have to make up somewhere else. Okay? That's the motion, correct?
That's the motion.
All right, and we've had a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. All right, let's move on then to item eight.
And just to be clear on that, we will also adjust the annuals that correspond to those numbers to be consistent with the motion.
Okay.
City manager's communication number four oh seven, dated December eighteen, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed annexation district located on East Arrow Park Boulevard, approximately one-point-one-six miles east of South Nogales Highway. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. We don't have any cards on this. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, may have a motion to close the public hearing.
Got a motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Public hearing is closed. What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move to proceed with the Raytheon West Annexation District.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nay. That motion carries. I'm sorry, it passed. Okay, item nine.
Public hearing, Miramonte Neighborhood Plan Amendment, PA one-eight-zero-four, east side of Country Club Road, between Second and Third Streets, to allow adaptive reuse of the Benedictine Monastery. Report from city manager. Hearing, resolution number two-two-nine-seven-six.
City manager's communication number four oh eight, dated December eighteen, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on a request to amend both the Miramonte Neighborhood Plan and the Alvernon Broadway Area Plan. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour- This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation, state your name, whether or not you live in the city, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are paid speaker.
Before we get started, I believe we want a presentation. Councilmember Kusacik, should we start with Mr. Poster? Mr. Poster, please come forward. Mr. Poster, we have five people who want to be heard on this item. I think we're all intimately familiar with it. I don't think we need a lot. However, you may know some of what the issues are going to be, and so certainly speak to those. And then I will give you time after the five people, if there's something you want, you think that we, someone has said incorrectly or the like. So I'll give you, how much time do you want?
Not much. I'll keep my comments short, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
My name is Corky Poster. I'm an architect and planner and a principal with Poster-Frost-Merto Architects and Preservation Architects here tonight on behalf of Tucson Monastery LLC, Ross Rolney, and representing that development and that proposal. I think the question really in front of all of us is, why is there a plan amendment at all? Why do we have a plan amendment in front of us? We are intending to move to a PAD, and we had several discussions about a PAD on the site. The site is zoned, kind of an odd zoning, half O3 and half R3, which is already high-density residential. So it's a little odd to have a rezoning for residential development on a site that is already high-density residential. But in the middle of this site is the Benedictine Monastery, an iconic and important building, certainly in our community and really among all of us, all of us in the city of Tucson. And so as we began to discuss, the project became clear that the right way to develop this site is to not proceed with the underlying entitled zoning, which allows four stories over the whole site, allows 250 units over the whole site, but rather to have the flexibility to manipulate the heights of the buildings to be respectful to the monastery. And number two, to allow for some additional uses on site that would allow public use of the monastery, which is currently a group dwelling. In that process, we went to staff, and staff determined that, in fact, there was a map in the plan that wouldn't allow the PAD that we were requesting. And so we undertook, under the leadership of Councilmember Kusacik and representatives from the Sam Hughes Neighborhood and the Miramonte Neighborhood, a very, very long set of negotiations to talk about exactly what this development should be and how it should operate. Normally, that wouldn't be in a plan amendment, but this is an important site, and it's understandable that folks in the area would want to front-load the requirements of a PAD, of a plan amendment, to include some of the kinds of things that they can expect in the development itself. We met many, many times, lots of good discussions, lots of sincere effort on the part of the neighbors to come to an agreement, lots of effort on the part of the developer to give up things, to really try to be responsive to what we were hearing from the neighbors, and also our respect for this important historic structure. This resulted in an agreement. First of all, we went to, I'm sorry, to the Planning Commission, and they said, go back and try to hash out more of an agreement with the neighbors. We did that. We have in your package a written agreement that we had with neighbors representing both the Miramonte and the Sam Hughes Neighborhood. And we're here before you for your review, your comment, and hopefully your approval of the plan amendment as submitted and as recommended by staff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Poster. We'll proceed to the public comment and then give you an opportunity if necessary. We'll start with Ruth Beaker.
Ruth Beaker, always unpaid. As Miramonte neighbor and as past Board President, instrumental in Miramonte having a plan. I support the PAD rezoning for this site. It has to comply with the plan. The concept map on 16, page 16, is not in compliance with the owner's stated intent to build apartments and add commercial use. So that must be amended. It's my concern that the addition of new text to our plan, Proposed Amendment Policy 2.4, is an entirely different issue. It is proposed as a means to control this future PAD zoning product and process, is front-loading text into our existing neighborhood plan, the best process for getting the best project, and that's going to exist in Miramonte neighborhood for decades to come. I think not. There are three areas where principles of good government are being compromised. One, the express purpose of any PAD to produce the best architectural design and use for that site is being compromised. Strategies 3 and 4 micro-manage limits on heights and units for the whole seven-plus acres without there being any consideration of the total project. Such limits certainly are not conducive to surrounding neighbors exploring rational options for the final PAD design, which will have the less negative impact on the neighbors. Second, the zoning process is compromised. Asking Planning Commission to amend a plan to regulate a PAD zone presents major complications. This was evident in September, when commissioners refused to schedule a public hearing without knowing the PAD project details. Providing those details within a few weeks did not have a process which could be described as inclusive, deliberative, transparent, creative, or public. And I hope that troubles you as much as it troubles me. But now, staff recommends in Strategy 6 that you make that document, signed by four neighbors and the developer, binding conditions for rezoning. Meanwhile, staff does recommend an advisory committee in Strategy 5. These two strategies seem to me to be in conflict. You've already set binding conditions in 6, and you're saying in 5, let's get together and talk about them. What is the purpose of the PAD public hearings? What's the zoning examiner's rule in all of this? If you're already doing a done deal before it ever goes to the zoning examiner, and that is what you are seeing in Policy 2.4. And third, the purpose of the Miramonte Neighborhood Plan as approved in 2008 is being compromised. We were directed by city staff at that time to write a visions and values document. We were told we could put no specific site parameters into our plan. And now look at what you're looking at. In conclusion, Policy 2.4 contains PAD zoning absolutes presenting as plan amendments. I urge you to consider them as guidelines for consideration, guidelines for consideration during a meaningful rezoning process. There has not been a meaningful process that has occurred yet. This difficult Benedictine project magnifies the city's procedural flaws. Determining need for plan amendment and best PAD design should happen concurrently. The developer, the staff, and the neighbors should be working together, but the city of Tucson doesn't do it that way. Amending the Miramonte Plan with Policy 2.4 as written would make a poster child for why the city must remediate its PAD permitting procedures as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth. Bonnie Pulis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Bonnie Pulis. I live at 1208 East Smoot Drive in the Campus Farm neighborhood. I'm here before you tonight as a citizen who has involved herself in planning issues for the last 25 years. I spent four years on the City Planning Commission. I spent 13 years on the Pima County Planning and Zoning Commission. I worked on the 1987 Northside Area Plan, specifically the Campus Farm subarea. I urge you tonight to make a plan amendment that revises and corrects the concept plan in the Miramonte Neighborhood Association, or the Miramonte Neighborhood Plan. That is the only plan amendment that should be discussed tonight. It is not possible, in my mind, under current law, for the mayor and council to be able to downzone private property. That concept map and the error that it contains essentially does that. The property is zoned high-density residential and high-density office, O3 and R3. The concept map would say, if you use, if you want a rezoning, then this neighborhood policy says you must go for lower density. I think that would be challenged immediately in the courts under Prop 207, should that have been seen through to its inevitable conclusion. Therefore, the error is really in the neighborhood plan, and that's something that the city approved. I don't understand why the developer was even made to make this plan amendment change when it was an error on the part of the city to even have it in the neighborhood plan. At the current time, a neighborhood plan amendment and a rezoning are two separate processes. If we choose to change that, we should have a discussion about that and have it in the open in a policy that everyone can understand. By including zoning conditions within a plan amendment, you are simply muddying the waters for everyone, yourselves, the neighbors, and the developers. I urge you, the only plan amendment you need to do tonight is to correct the concept map so that it is in line with the hard zoning that currently exists on this property, and allow the monastery project to move forward as a zoning, as a rezoning process, which we know what that process should involve. Thank you very much.
Michael Cahero?
I'm Michael Cahero. I live at 2740 East Sixth Street, which is very near to the monastery, just around the corner. And it boils down to the fact that this is a terrible plan. This is a disaster, a disastrous plan, because no good ideas have come from it, and you're trying to put 10 pounds into a 5-pound bag. That's what, since 2012, I've noticed this has been happening, squeezing, squeezing, pudding. And there's, what about the cars? What are you going to do with the cars? Did you double the number of the cars? Did you ask the developer about the cars? Where are they going to go? You know they have so many beds, 200-some. That means you double the number of cars that are in there. And all that spewing of gas, isn't there going to be a garage? A huge garage is going to be there, and it's going to trap all these gases? And then this is, this is an invasion into the Sam Hughes Neighborhood. It's a destruction. It will kill Sam Hughes Neighborhood totally and utterly because you will encourage more development of an ugly, similar, massive type. You will be responsible for the death of the Sam Hughes Neighborhood and the Miramonte Neighborhood as we know it. You can laugh about it now and retire, but it's going to happen if you go ahead with this plan. This is terrible. I don't think that there's been enough clarity. It's, everything is confusing. It's very opaque. I don't understand. And then the lack of ideas for this. And why isn't the developer here? Why doesn't he talk? He's got a voice. Why should I have to come, you know, and complain and, you know? I'm diabetic, okay? This is another issue. You know, this stuff just cranks up my blood sugar like crazy. I was diagnosed in 2006, '07, type 2 diabetes, and this junk, this, these multi-big monstrous prisons that you insist on building and giving to the community, like the Mark over on Broadway, that's what you want to do. That's your taste. That's your direction. That's your voice. That's your legacy. You know? You have to, you have to wake up, I think. You have to wake up. Now's the time to wake up, before you resign. Wake up. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
Yes, sir. It's your time to speak.
This is not, one of the things you have to remember is that, I don't know, I've thought about this so often, I've written so many letters in my head, I've got nothing back from anybody. None of you have written back to me or talked to me, or, you know, nothing. It's all opaque. It's just nothing. I'm supposed to trust you to do the right thing? I don't think so. You know, and I'm affected because of the amount of pollution and the depth of depravity that's going to happen. And also, there's another thing, it's the alcohol thing. I don't like the alcohol thing or foisting on us, you know? I go down to the Rincon Market. What do they do? They put in carbs and booze. That's all they're putting in. That's what that neighborhood is becoming, a neighborhood of carbohydrates and alcohol and booze and beer. And I'm supposed to enjoy that? We've been fighting that for years. We've been fighting bars coming into that neighborhood for years, and now we have, we lost the Rincon Market. It's no good anymore. You can't eat there. No salads. What can a diabetic eat? What am I supposed to eat there? Pizza? That converts to sugar. That's all it does. That's what you're building, is more tension, more stress, more blood pressure problems, you know, cancer, the whole thing. It's just, and the traffic has gotten so bad, and it's going to get worse. It's going to get worse and worse. Because you don't have any place to put the cars. Ask the developer, this Corky, if he's got any idea about how many cars. You can't pin them down. They don't say. Anyway, the idea was to talk about this, the amendment of this plan. So I'm limiting myself to that. I have other issues that I could go back, because I've lived here all my life. I was here in, well...
Thank you, sir.
Say la vie.
Jeffrey Calabrese?
I'm Jeffrey Calabrese, at 3660 East Third. I am unpaid. I made a speech about 100 times in the last two weeks waiting for this meeting, and I thought I'd just be extemporaneous tonight, test my fine Jesuit Chicago Irish Catholic education. And I'm grateful I'm saying that. So I thought it would be best to share my experience rather than facts. Let's see. Yeah, I graduated Chicago High School in '86, and I came out here, Steve Kerr, Sean Elliott, those of you who remember them, playing. And they drew me out to the west. And being from a strict Irish-Italian Catholic family, one of the first things we did was go to Mass at the Benedictine Convent. And since then, and my stay here in Tucson, I have visited that convent, been intimate with the nuns, I've had paintings by the nuns in my home, I've had dinner and lunch with them, I've been well-received, and I'm a devout Catholic. I enjoy perpetual adoration. On the Feast of Our Lady of Guadalupe, really, this is when triggered me to go get this, which is the '08 Plan, which I'm grateful other people's experience, and I've only been in this now for maybe three days, is frustrating. And I've heard the word opaque, and I've heard the word compromise. And I also wear another hat, not only as a Miramonte resident, also Roman Catholic devout, who's been at the Benedictine place hundreds... who's been at the Benedictine place hundreds of times. I'm also a former registered nurse, and I know the good meaning of documentation, that if I didn't do it, it didn't get done. And I better be damn well right, right now, because 10 years from now, that might be called up into question, and I have been in front of attorneys. What, what did I chart? And why? So what I want to do with my summer and spring project this year is dig into this thing, because there's something stinking on ice in this whole process, because a simple, a simple citizen like myself, educated, literate, computer-literate, and motivated, should be able to go to a plan and find out, how do I change the plan? Because I don't want to read it in a Ward 6 email blast. I want to know step-by-step how this bloody thing got done. And I know it's upon myself. I visited your office, Mr. Kazachik, and I met one of your employees, who told me the dealing of this thing is in Mr. Poster's office, and that tote said right there. I said, uh-oh, there's something wrong with that. And I asked, is he contracted with the city? No, he represents monastery. Oh, what a wonderful name for an LLC, going to dump on a monastery. Alls I can say is I'm going to use my registered nursing documentation skills, and I hope every one of your names is on something, because I'll be back the next time we have this, and I want to let you know what I find. How well does the city document, why I had to document as a registered nurse? I, I just want to know what's going on. And I have to start at the beginning. I'm late to this party. I know I don't know what's going on, but good documentation, I should be up to speed by the next meeting. And I really appreciate this open environment. I've seen you guys on, what is that, Public Access? And I appreciate the opportunity to vent a little bit. It's very frustrating that a typical citizen like myself cannot find and connect the dots. That's going to destroy something very beautiful, and I, I can't believe how many people are sleeping on this. I'm a renter, and you would know by my address. I rent, but my skin in the game, it goes through Eucharist in this mission. And I'm grateful for Our Lady of Guadalupe for inspiring me finally to connect the dots after 11 months of living in Miramonte. So I look forward to meeting my fellow residents in this project. Thank you.
Sam Barron?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sam Barron. I own the house, I would say singularly most affected by the proposed development. My house, that house is at 3205 East Third, and it is directly behind the subject property, which, if built as proposed, will cast a literal and figurative shadow over that house. Anyhow, as you know, the Benedictine is unique and important and beloved not only by my neighbors and me, but by the entire community, and I think everybody in this room feels that way. Here you're being asked by a developer to amend our Miramonte Neighborhood Plan. It's our plan. It's not the Sam Hughes plan, it's not the Ward 6 plan, it's our neighborhood plan. I'm the vice president of the Miramonte Neighborhood Association, and speaking tonight in place of Linda Dobbin, who is ill. She's the president of Miramonte Neighborhood Association and could not be here. So these comments are on behalf of Miramonte Neighborhood Association and not myself personally, however. First, personally, I want to congratulate and thank Mayor Rothschild and Councilmember Scott for your service. You're both going to be leaving very big shoes to fill. Thank you. Both our association president, Linda Dobbin and I, were in the group of neighbors that met with Ross Rolney and Corky Poster, as facilitated by Councilmember Steve Kazachik. It was a good and long process that involved a lot of meetings. There was a lot of trust-building that had to take place. There was a lot of compromise that took place in those meetings. In the end, I think we made a lot of progress on important issues to our neighborhood and to Sam Hughes in defining the scope of this proposed project. You've all seen that agreement, so I need to explain what happened between the time that agreement was made and tonight. Linda Dobbin took the agreement back to the Miramonte Neighborhood Association Board and found that our best efforts in trying to represent the board had fallen short. Perhaps you can relate to that. Almost everything was acceptable but one item. The board was insulted that in the agreement, the height of the buildings stepping down to the west to Country Club was at three stories, but the height in the, to the east, to Anderson Boulevard, to the Miramonte neighborhood, was four stories. My house is unusual, that has two stories. Most of the homes in our neighborhood are one-story. So four stories is not the, quote, gradual transition that our Miramonte Neighborhood Plan calls for in a development, not even close. So the board voted that we ask that the height to the east be no higher than the height to the west. That position was taken to the Planning Commission at their public hearing, and they voted six to one in favor of making that change in their recommendation to you. It would have been seven-nothing, but the dissenting voter wanted stricter additional restrictions that the other commissioners would not agree to. There were only seven commissioners present at the meeting, and a vote of seven was required to pass anything to you, as you know, and there was no recommendation made to you on this, on this matter at all. We're also generally in agreement with the comments of Ruth Beaker as to the appropriateness of what goes into a neighborhood plan amendment versus into a rezoning and pad. And we believe that there should be flexibility in the pad and rezoning on some of the specifics of the development. So that's where we are, and why our written comments to you, in which we've asked that you amend the staff recommendation, want either to limit the construction to the east to three stories, or if you do not include Policy 2.4, as Ms. Beaker has suggested, but if you attach the neighborhood agreement in any way to the amendment, then it should be changed in the same way, that is, to limit construction to the east to three stories the same as to the west. Thanks for your time and attention to this matter. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Poster? Do you have any, the card, we can take it. Okay.
Hi, my name is Josephine Wilson, and I live a block from the monastery. I'm a leader of a group called Neighbors for Reasonable Monastery Development. We've been involved in the meetings with the developer and with Councilmember Kazachik. I also serve on the Sam Hughes Neighborhood Association Board, and I'm here on behalf of the board today. So I just wanted to say briefly that we support the Miramonte Neighborhood Association's request. We also support the binding conditions that are currently in the plan amendment with respect to the height limits, setbacks, and step downs in particular. So we very mu, and we would support anything that was lower or more strict than what's already in there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. If there's no other speakers, Mr. Poster? Yes, ma'am. You can come up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Halsey Taylor. I live at 1017 North Palo Verde Boulevard, which is in the Miramonte neighborhood. I've been at several of these open, public hearings. I've been associated with the monastery since 1995. I've spoken here in the past in support of careful consideration of what happens to this landmark property. I feel it is much greater than just these two neighborhood associations. I feel that the city at large and all of the 700-plus oblates who are associated with that monastery be taken into consideration. I have a question, because I have been unable to get consensual agreement on who comprises the advisory committee that has been alluded to on a number of occasions, the past three meetings. I wondered if there was some definitive list of people from both those neighborhood associations and the developer himself, so that I know exactly who the people on that advisory committee are. Is there a way I can obtain that tonight?
The names are listed on the joint letter of agreement that's contained in the material that's public record.
And the joint letter is where?
It's in, it's in the material that's on the public record right now.
There's, it's an, there's an exhibit reference to it. Somebody would have to pull it up. We can pull it up for you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just the letter. What, what is it, Mike? It's Attachment H to the, to the exhibits that are part of the record.
Attachment H. And where, can I look at a hard copy of this? Where can I see this?
If you go to, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
We can bring you a copy up.
I appreciate that very, very much. Thank you. And thank you all for your considerable attention to a very important, a very important, on many levels, piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Are, is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this matter? If not, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I, I don't think, unless folks have additional questions of Mr. Poster, and then I think we can call him at that time. I've got a motion and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Councilmember Kazachik, this matter happens to reside in your ward.
Let me address a couple of things. First of all, the comments made with respect to, or generally, what are we doing with this, with this property? And that we are building the Mark student housings all over the city. One similarity between this project and the Mark is that the Mark was built according to the underlying zoning entitled for that parcel. That, that would, project required no public involvement, even though the developer went through almost a year of public outreach with a couple of the surrounding neighborhoods, very similar to this process. But at the end of the day, the developer took the position that there is an entitlement. Every piece of ground in this city has an entitlement according to underlying zoning, and that is, that at the end of the day is what that developer chose to do: exercise his rights under the entitlement and build without any more public process and simply move forward with it. This governing body had no voice in that. The zoning is the zoning. Similarly, in this project, every bit of this conversation is framed not by some blank design slate for the site, but by what's allowed according to the underlying zoning. That's the beginning point for this conversation. What is that? It is 44 feet tall, approximately 660 student housing beds with no public use of the monastery. And before we moved as a governing body to initiate the historic landmark designation on it, it also included demolition of the monastery. That was the beginning of this conversation. The developer came in with that as the underlying entitlement and made some proposals. We had over 100 people in the first public meeting at the monastery and over 100 people at the second one. At the first one, where the initial concept of the project was presented, it was seven stories tall. It was approximately 86 feet tall, and there was an audible gasp in the room when the, when the rendering of that was shown on the screen. Remembering, of course, that the underlying zoning still existed, and that was the, that was the opening gambit for what, what was going to be proposed for the development. We, as a governing body, moved forward and initiated the historic landmark designation to, to preempt the, part of the conversation that had to do with demolition. We still have that in play. It has been a long process. There have been dozens of meetings. There have been hundreds of people included in public outreach by the developer, by the architect, representing not simply Miramonte and Sam Hughes neighborhoods, but the community at large. So to the last lady who made the comment that this is a community asset, an iconic building, nobody in this room would disagree with that. There have been three Planning Commission hearings, significant neighborhood outreach, and I would agree with Ruth Beaker that this is the poster child for why we ought to have a code option for concurrently running planning and zoning, planning amendments and zoning options forward. We don't have that right now. And so when this process began, there was a significant lack of trust that underlined, underlined the conversations. As a result of that lack of trust, on both sides, I might add, people were asking for front-loading specificity into the plan amendment, so that that lack of trust would be set aside when we entered into the rezoning part of this process. And so there was some assurance that there wouldn't be a bait and switch that happened six or seven months down the road when we got into the rezoning part of the process. We are here tonight addressing neighborhood plan amendments. Primary questions, points of contention in this project are generally, generally considered during the rezoning. We don't have the luxury for that, or this conversation wouldn't even be happening. The property owner is a minor, minor partner in a financial arrangement. The senior partner is back east and frankly is looking at this process that has now been going on for going on a year, it might be more than that, I'm not sure, wondering, why don't we, as an ownership group, simply exercise our option and write a, write an agreement with a student housing company from out of this area and let them come in and build their damn student housing project, like the Mark, limited to 44 feet, 660 student housing beds? Why are we doing this? So here we are tonight, and the question tonight is how, if at all, do we amend their Miramonte Neighborhood Plan and the Broadway-Alvernaun area plan and allow something other than the 660 student housing beds and that 44 feet? The Planning Commission study session, the first, the first study session, they, they wouldn't make a decision. They sent the groups back. I helped facilitate meetings. The answer to who was represented in those meetings were everyone in the room, at least I assumed, and the developers assumed, that these people were representing the neighborhood leadership. In fact, that's the way it was presented to us. I'm sorry that the neighborhood leadership has changed their positions now in their, in their letters. But quite frankly, this joint letter of agreement wouldn't have been agreed to by the developer. It's a bundled package had some of the new, new requests and demands been on the table at the time. What, what they're asking for with respect to the 35 feet or three stories on the east is nine feet less than what the developer could do by right. Understand that. It's nine feet less than what the developer could do by right, without any public conversation and closing the monastery to public use. The statement that was agreed to has two primary pieces to it. Number one is that we approve the plan amendment as submitted by the developers. Yes, that does have a 55-foot reference to it. That is five stories at 10-foot ceiling, floor-to-ceiling height. It is 11 feet taller than what he could do by right, what the developer could do by right, but it is about 30 feet less than where this conversation began. It also incorporate, requests, the letter requests that they, that we incorporate these terms and conditions, not in the plan amendment, but as conditions to the rezoning that happened later on. So what are these terms and conditions? They're, they're, they're very vague. It is, well, this one isn't. It's preservation. Everybody has agreed, we're going to preserve the monastery, number one. Number two, reuse of the monastery. A public conversation about a public reuse of the monastery, that's included in this. Thoughtful design and planning. Thoughtful design and planning. They will go now into the, into the rezoning phase and engage the public. It is a very public process moving forward, and that's the specificity that's being objected to now, thoughtful design and planning, working together. That's, that's one of the conditions of this, of this joint letter of agreement. Again, not, you know, to set up a design review committee. Again, not, you know, to set up a design review committee, but it is going to be a very public process. A rezoning process, as you all know, includes public meetings with the neighborhoods. It also includes zoning examiner public hearings and another public hearing when it gets here, if not more. Buffers and setbacks. We've agreed to save the oleanders. That was the buffer. That was the perimeter that the Miramonte neighborhood on the east side was demanding. So it constrains the footprint that the developer could do. Right now, we could go in and blade them all and knock them down and put in this 44 feet of student housing. Concession made by the developer during the course of negotiating this joint letter of agreement. Density, they have agreed to 250 units of high-end apartments. They have agreed to no student housing. So I sit here tonight wanting to just simply make the point that we are preserving the monastery. It will not be student housing. We have significantly reduced the massing over what was originally proposed. There will be a public use of the monastery, and there will be a public process going forward in the rezoning. It's been a difficult process. Everybody knew it was going to be because this is a sensitive site. As I said, it's been impacted by a lack of trust on both sides. We began at 86 feet and seven stories. We're significantly down now. Both sides made concessions. The design negotiations will continue throughout the PAD process. That is a rezoning. Coming to the 55-foot compromise set the stage for the other conditions in the joint letter of agreement that are relatively vague. So I am going to move that the joint letter of agreement be incorporated as conditions of the rezoning and that we amend the plan amendment according to the sections 2.4, 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 that were presented to the planning commission by the developer and that set the stage for the rest of these conversations.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. I have just two questions. Councilman Kazachik, you can answer them, or Mr. Poster. The 55-foot reference, there's four sides to this property, obviously.
It's on the east and the west. I mean, the north and the south.
That's okay. That's what I thought. And so on the east, which is Anderson, is that, what's the height on that?
Corky, do you want to speak to it? I mean, I can, but it's a project.
Simple question, Corky. What is the height on?
Four stories, which we're presupposing to be 44 feet.
Okay, that's all. I thought so. I just wanted to check. The other thing.
Which, by the way, is what is entitled on the property.
Right. Corky, one other question. By right, actually by right, there's a... By right, if you were to do student housing, how many units could you do?
Well, the thing about student housing, the land use code limits the number of units by zoning. And so you could build 250 units on that site, but they could all be four bedrooms.
The question isn't units, it's beds.
Right, got it. So...
The zoning order, the land use code doesn't...
Right, so for zoning by right, you could do 50, do 250.
250, correct.
And they could be a lot more beds without this stipulation.
Yeah.
And what you've said is we would like to go to 255, but we're limiting the beds, essentially.
We're doing one- and two-bedroom units.
Okay.
And have exempted group dwelling from the site.
Exactly.
Okay.
Ironically, it is currently...
Means the non-...
A monastery is a group dwelling, which is ironic.
Right, well, that's how it's owned. Okay, got it. All right, that's my questions. Councilmember Durham?
I want to commend Councilmember Kazachik. That was a very articulate explanation of the situation.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Councilmember Kazachik, I just want to be clear. In your motion, I think you only referenced strategies 2.4, 1.2, and 3.
Yeah, the recommendation presented by the developer to the staff.
Which includes 4 and 5 as part of the neighborhood amendment.
As presented to the council, the resolution approving the plan amendments includes strategies 2.4, 1 through 2.4, 6.
Correct.
And that's part of your motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The only ones that were a point of contention were the 2.4.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the others were 2.3 through 6. But Councilmember Romero?
So just to make sure, this, the Benedictine is zoned group dwelling right now. So the zoning would allow student housing.
Yes.
So that is at the heart of the concern that, at least I can speak for myself, that I have. I'm pretty sure my colleagues sitting next to me have, right? Because of the underlying zoning, and this is what Councilmember Kazachik is saying, because of the underlying zoning, what can be built there, yes, will be just four stories, but could cause so much more damage than what has taken almost a year, many people, residents, the ward office, so many others, to try and accomplish today. Now, I would like to ask about this concern that Ruth has presented to us, and if there is a possible, I know it's related but unrelated, if there is a possible solution as we move forward, as has been said, the concern of changing a neighborhood plan and an area plan that is very prescriptive, but that residents want to see there because there's no other mechanism to move into describing what this project can be like. And it's the only space that we have with the current processes that we have. Can you explain that to us, Mike?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Romero, I think as Councilmember Kazachik referenced, a code change that allows for concurrent review of plan amendments as well as PAD and/or other types of rezoning goes a long way towards doing that. The proposed text amendment to accomplish that has been drafted up. It just needs to go through the process and come back to the mayor and council for consideration.
And let's, Mike, remind us all of what that process will be.
And so what that would allow for is that the plan amendment, the neighborhood or area plan amendment, would be considered at the same time as the specifics within the rezoning, which could be a straight-up rezoning, C1 to C2, or it could be a PAD, which is a particular type of rezoning. And that would allow that for everybody to see the complete picture all at once and understand exactly how the plan amendment relates to the rezoning and vice versa.
Right, and...
And the rezoning is the full statutory and code required process, which is the public notice, the procedures in front of the zoning examiner, the zoning examiner's recommendation to the mayor and council, the public hearing in front of the mayor and council before your legislative decision.
But right now, at this point in time, we don't have the capacity and the processes to do that.
Correct. Our processes require that the plan amendment be accomplished and approved before the rezoning can move forward.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we clarified that to let the public know that I agree with what Ruth has to say about the process, but that right now, we don't have that available at our disposal.
Okay.
My question as well is, and maybe this question is for Corky, representing the developer. Tell me about the reason that there is, there was a consensus on building three stories on the western edge of the property, and there wasn't that consensus on the eastern edge of the property?
Great question, Councilmember Romero. Mr. Mayor, the issue really is the monastery itself. The monastery is a facade building. It poses its entire front face to Country Club. And throughout the public meetings and public hearings we had, we heard over and over again the concern that what happens along Country Club should not in any way detract from the majesty of the facade of the chapel or the monastery itself. And so as we studied the project, it was very clear to us that we needed, if we had any height at all, we need to have that height oriented east-west so that it presented a very small facade to Country Club and to the Miramonte neighborhood, and that we needed something along Miramonte, excuse me, along Country Club that scaled the building in a respectful and appropriate way. And so early on, you know, we were talking to the developer, and he said, gee, I really like four stories. I'd get more units there. And our point was, this is better for the architecture of the monastery.
And how about on the eastern side? Can you talk a little bit more?
Well, the eastern side is really the back end of the monastery. No disrespect to the Miramonte neighborhood, but the, sort of the, that neoclassical or Spanish clodri revival was really a front-face building. And the back was functional. The back of the chapel itself is a dock, and there are, there's really no facade whatsoever. It's a series of the ends of fingers that face that. I understand full well the concern about the impact of the height on Miramonte neighborhood, but that's not why we lowered it on Country Club. We lowered it because of the architecture of the monastery itself, and the architecture on the east end is entirely different.
And on the east end, you're essentially keeping what the underlying zoning would allow, right? Is it 44 feet as well?
Correct. Four feet higher, then.
Okay. How do you, how do you, what's the plan to disguise or protect that or buffer the east side to the neighborhood?
The oleanders around the entire building range from about 12 to 16 feet tall. And in close quarters, you sort of don't see over that. We are also setting that back substantially from the east side, actually crowding the monastery a bit in order to pull back from that dimension. And our other plan is to make it beautiful. You know, we've heard terms about minimizing the damage, and that's not our plan. We're architects, and we think we do good work. And so our real goal is to make it beautiful, to make it so there aren't intrusive elements into that neighborhood and to allow us to get to the height that allows us to be, frankly, a sustainable development that at least stands up against the alternative of student housing.
All right, thank you.
To anybody else? If not, we've got a motion.
I would just say they're great questions, and they're exactly the kinds of questions that'll be addressed and resolved and hammered out during the rezoning process. It's why we need this...
So we still have to, we have to remind ourselves and the public that the rezoning process still has to happen, and all of those, all of those details will...
We're just beginning.
Yeah, this is just the beginning.
Neighborhood associations will be part of this.
Okay.
But I wanted to make sure, Councilmember, that there has been thought put to this, and there will continue to be input and feedback of the same.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this matter? If not, it's a roll call. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Resolution 22976 passes by a vote of 7-0. Let's move on to item 10.
Public hearing, C81807, amending Chapter 23B, the Unified Development Code relating to hospital helipads. Report from City Manager, Hearing Ordinance Number 11608.
City Manager's Communication Number 411, dated December 18, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Unified Development Code to allow helipads as an accessory use to hospitals. I'm not sure that we need any presentation from staff. If any questions arise, I'm sure we see you over there. We have nobody wishing to speak on this matter. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? If not, I would like a motion to close the public hearing. We've got a motion, second, to close the public hearing. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? The public hearing is closed. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance 11608 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11608, relating to planning and zoning, amending the Tucson Code, Chapter 23B, Unified Development Code, Article 4, Sections 4.8.4, 4.8.5, 4.8.6, 4.8.7, 4.8.9, and 4.9.4, and setting an effective date.
What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move we pass and adopt Ordinance Number 11608.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ordinance 11608 passes by a vote of 6-0. Let's move on to item 11.
Public hearing, C81806, amending Chapter 23B, the Unified Development Code relating to animal boarding in commercial zones. Report from City Manager, Hearing, Ordinance Number 11609.
City Manager's Communication Number 414, dated December 18, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Unified Development Code to allow animal boarding in commercial zones. Again, staff, I will defer a presentation unless there's questions required. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. I don't see any cards on this matter. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this matter? If not, can I get a motion to close this public hearing? Got a motion, second, to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The public hearing is closed. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance 11609 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11609, relating to planning and zoning, amending the Tucson Code, Chapter 23B, Unified Development Code, Sections 4.8.6 and 4.9.4, and setting an effective date.
What's the council's pleasure?
Your Honor, this sets it up so that we have a little more flexible use in C1 zoning for animal boarding and, like, pet hotels and stuff like that. Also, there's a great setback rule that there can be no setbacks unless you're 200 feet from the residence. So I think staff did a good job on this. I'm going to move that we pass and adopt 11609.
Got a motion and a second to pass this ordinance. Any discussion on this matter?
Yeah, I have a question.
Councilmember Kazachik?
I want to make sure, at the very least, at the very least, if we're allowing this use adjacent to residential areas, that it needs to be subject to this special exception. So neighbors and other businesses have a voice in setting conditions to the attached operation.
Mr. Bursey, can I come forward?
Location each is going to have its own unique set of circumstances, so it can't be a one-size-fits-all.
Yeah, so Honorable Mayor and Council, Councilmember Kazachik, yes, it is set up so it's, when it's closer than 200 feet from a residential zone, it does, it is required to go through a zoning examiner special exception process, and you can put all those site-specific conditions on those.
Okay. Other jurisdictions, Oro Valley, Phoenix, in the, at least in this area, and we've reached out even to Denver and found out that there are hours of operation, there's order control, there's sound control, it's, you know, whether or not you have to escort your animals out when they're outdoors. So just to make sure that those terms and conditions are a part of the whole special exception conversation as they move forward, depending on the set of circumstances. It may be in an area where those are all moot points, or they may not be.
Yes, Councilmember Kazachik, those are all included as U-specific standards, and they were, those were examples that we looked at while drafting this ordinance.
Cool, thanks.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? If not, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye, and I'm an aye on the helipads, too.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Ordinance 11609 passes by about a 7-0. Let's move to item 12.
Zoning, C90902, Keno Campus, PAD 18, District R1, R2, and C2 to PAD 18. Major change, City Manager's report, ordinance adoption, report from City Manager, Ordinance Number 11610.
City Manager's Communication Number 409, dated December 18, is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to expand the plan area development boundary and area by adding approximately 172 acres into the Keno Campus, PAD 18 District. The zoning examiner and staff recommend approval of PAD zoning and adoption of the ordinance. Is there an applicant or representative present for the owner?
Can I get over here?
If you'd come up, please, sir?
Do we need him?
Sir, could you state your name and who you represent?
Tom Coyle.
Tom Coyle, representing Pima County.
Okay. Are you agreeable to the proposed requirements in the ordinance?
The county is.
And I guess you probably are, too, at least, more or less.
I am.
Okay, there you go. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11610 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11610 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located in the proximity south of Interstate 10, east of Campbell Avenue, north of Benson Highway, and west of Treat Avenue in case C90902, Quino Campus Plan Area Development, Pad 18, R1, R2, and C2 to Pad 18, and setting an effective date.
What's the council's pleasure?
May I move to approve the request for rezoning as recommended by the zoning examiner and passing the adopt ordinance 11610.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion on this item?
I just want to make sure that... I understand, we are being asked to allow retail in the small cross-hashed area, is that really the only change that we're being asked to do?
Mr. Coyle.
The broadly stated that the public facilities in the Quino expansion are permitted effectively by right, but the commercial area is the area that's the will, the entitlement associated with this action. And by it being in a pad, we're integrating both the public uses and the future private uses, which will support the sports facility.
And a couple of months ago, we approved the plat for 755 units, and that just fell apart, or...
That is correct. The developer did not go through with that project. I think the plat was abandoned, I believe it was around September when that action took place.
Okay, so you're just planning on building soccer fields with a retail component to support the soccer activity?
That's correct.
Okay.
Will this help preserve the retail racetrack now that you're moving a bunch of soccer facilities out there?
Yes.
Good. (laughing). Coil's on record. All right, we're good.
Okay.
Make sure that we have that on the record.
Yeah, I'm sure certain people are watching at home, we could say hello. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Fimbres.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild.
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek.
Aye.
Mrs. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Romero.
Aye.
Ordinance 11610 passes by a vote of 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tom. All right, let's move on to item 13.
Zoning, C91810, La Roca Vista, Tancaverty Road, SR to R1, city manager's report. This item is continued from the meeting of December 4, 2018. Report from city manager, report from zoning examiner.
City manager's communication number 415, dated December 18, is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to rezone approximately 4.5 acres from SR to R1 zoning. The rezoning site is located on the south side of Tancaverty Road, approximately .0, .63 miles east of Catalina Highway. The zoning examiner and staff recommend approval of R1 zoning, subject to the revised preliminary development package, dated October 12, 2018, in certain conditions. I've got one question, but is the applicant or representative present?
Yes.
Could you come up and state your name and who you represent?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, my name is Brian Underwood, and I'm with the Planning Center to East Congress, and I am representing the property owner.
And who is the property owner?
The property owner is Francis Hart.
Okay. So, what is in this package, it says the development package dated October 12, 2018, but I heard tonight, and I think I've seen something maybe as recent as this afternoon, which always makes us happy, that there's some, that the property owner has agreed to some of the requests of the neighbors, and then I heard at least a couple neighbors say, and Mike, this is where I need your help, I heard a couple neighbors say that if those agreements are put in the record, that they would withdraw their objections. And the reason that's important is, I believe, although someone would have to check, that the withdrawal of those objections would take this from a supermajority vote requirement to a majority vote requirement. Mr. Rankin, can you, before I turn it over to Councilmember Cunningham, can you get us through that? What do we need to do, or can we do?
That is my understanding with respect to the supermajority down to the majority, to incorporate the conditions, we would have to identify what those, what those are specifically.
Well, why don't we start with this? Mr. Underwood, why don't you tell us now, unless, Councilmember Cunningham, do you have it?
Your Honor, I've got everything.
Okay, take it.
Let's start with the two stories. We're going to limit the two stories to what is currently lots 15 and 16 in the presented.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cunningham, we will be limiting lots 1 through 13 to single story, so it will be just 14 and 15 that will be, because we've...
Oh, because you've eliminated lot 2.
Yes.
I was, I'm eliminating lot 2 and keeping those numbers. So we're eliminating lot 2, so we're only going to have one house on the west side.
So you've, so what you submitted on October 12 was 16 houses, and now you're down to 15 houses, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct, yes.
Okay, and then Councilmember Cunningham, I think, was asking you about the location as well.
Right, and then the two stories are only the last two on the south, on the southwest corner, just those two lots.
That's right.
Every other, every other home will be one story, correct?
That is correct.
All right, well, we've got a 30-foot setback and a 10-foot buffer, just about everywhere?
Yes, that is correct, with the exception of lot number 12, which the setback is set at 27 feet.
All right, we missed the 3 feet, but for the most part, we get all those things addressed. Hold on. I really want to talk about lot 14. I'm concerned about the drainage on that side. I want lot 14, if we can, where that sliver of drainage that's between lots, actually, it's not lot 14 anymore, I guess it would be lot 13. Lot 13, which is the southeasternmost lot, that's the lot I'm talking about, the one that's, that looks like a Y, all right? That lot, I want to try to shift it to the west as much as possible. We want that building, the building, to be at least 50 feet. I think we talked about that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cunningham, the existing, if you'll note on the PDP, the revised PDP that we sent with 15 lots, you'll note that the closest corner of the residence, that's the closest residence to the east there, is 19 feet away, and we have a 30-foot building setback, so you're one foot shy of that 50 feet. And we do have that 20-foot space in the middle, and we have kept that there for two things, for a 20-foot sewer easement, as well as to accommodate drainage through the end of the cul-de-sac there. But where we're connecting to the sewer is actually at the southwest property corner, and so we may be pushing that lot number 15 in the southwest corner over 10 feet, giving that adjacent neighbor to the west a bigger buffer, since right now, effectively, they would only have 15 feet to that closest home. So it makes, it makes it a little more equitable for them in terms of the other, the other agreed-upon setbacks at 30 feet, and it also accommodates that sewer along the western boundary.
We also have to make sure that we've got the 10-foot greenbelt that surrounds the property.
Yes, that is correct. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cunningham, there is the 10-foot landscape border along the eastern property boundary, and we did propose a 10-foot landscape border immediately adjacent to lot 1 on the west side.
Okay, Brian, I'm looking at your original map that you were submitting, which is the house that you're taking out, what lot?
So lots 1 and 2 over on the west side have now been just combined into one lot.
Got it. Okay, going down to the bottom, I think that's where you were talking about trying to move lots, if I'm right, lot 16 a little more to the east?
That's correct.
Okay, and how much will you stipulate that will be the buffer between lot 16 and the adjacent neighborhood?
The lot 16, it's currently at 10 feet right now, and if we shift that over to accommodate a 20-foot sewer easement, then we would have a 10-foot, 10 feet of a setback to the side yard, and then another 5 feet to the side of the home.
Total of?
25.
Okay. And then, you can then keep lot 14 with the same, because I see where you have some additional space in there. Can you leave lot 14 at its existing setback?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay.
We can leave 14.
We want to increase that lot 14 setback a little bit more, if we can. That's where we're looking, or we're looking to take that building far from that prop, we want to move that property to the west as much as possible. That's the last piece, that's the 5 feet, that's the 50 feet, building to building minimum I'm looking for.
So right now, we would be, if we give an extra one foot, then we would be 50 to 50.
All right. So those are the, those are, I think that addresses almost every single concern that was brought up. I think there's a couple of, there's a couple of pieces that, you know, we could probably talk this thing to death and have another three months of negotiation back and forth, and I don't think we'd get it done.
Well, let me, let me, I know there were a couple folks, Ed, I think you were one, and I think the fellow, it may have been John...
That's Mr. Dickinson, sir.